All right, it's seven o'clock, so let's open the meeting with the pledge. Our legions.
My legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. All right, so our first order of business is our meeting minutes from October's meeting. As a reminder, we had two sign permits. One for Studio 817 here on Buffalo Street, and one for Millers Mill Works, which apparently is up. I have not seen it, but Carol verifies as she walks by and drives by. You should send us a picture. FaceTime us. Oh Lily, you were at that meeting as well?
Yup.
All right. Does everybody have a chance to look them over? Motion to approve? Todd, second? Me, Carol, all in favor? All right. So, we actually are looking at a special use permit and sign permit for, am I saying it right? Conti?
Yup.
Conti Auto. And do you like to spell by Rich or Richard?
Rich.
Rich, okay. So Rich Conti is here. Just a tiny bit of background on the property. Property is located at 8121 Buffalo Road, which was Caesar's Auto. That is still owned by Caesar's Auto. Actually, it's under Dante Leasing LLC. Rich submitted a letter, a notarized letter, stating that he can come on the behalf of the property for the special use per- that special use permit, new signs, branding, site plan, anything of that nature. So, we will put that in the record that that is in fact here. He also submitted his business certificate for Conti's Auto, which will be located at 8121 Buffalo Road, as long as the special use permit is okayed. So we have that. And one last piece of business about the property. A lot of questions about why he has to come and get a special use permit, since it was already a vehicle repair shop and sales. In 1993, we actually, I have a letter in their file, they got a special use permit, it was zoned and permitted for the operation. What happened was it expired, which is why we're here. In our new zoning law on page 80, in section, Article 10, Section 6, it talks about expiration of permits, and one of the expirations is the approved use and cease of operations for more than 12 consecutive months for any reason. And the property has been vacant according to our electric records since around September of 2021. So that is why Rich is here, to get a new special use permit. And we will let Vicki walk in and get settled before we get started here. Hi Vicki. That's all right. All right, so Rich, take it away. Just kind of explain to us what's happening up there, what your vision is. We have all the paperwork. Most of the board had it and has been able to redo it for the last week. So...
So yeah, basically just in the business plan here, it's just a general repair shop. We plan to take in as many customers as possible, but I mean, there's only room for one to two vehicles on the bay. So theoretically, it'd only be, you know, one or two customers at a time. You know, we're offering a wide range of services. Hopefully inspections sooner than later. That's to come after everything's established. Other than that, I mean, it's just kind of self-explanatory. Any repair shop you go to, you come in, you know, decent office.
Yeah.
Come in, scheduled appointment, whether it's the same day, or you know, next day, or however long it takes, you know, for the vehicle to be repaired or whatever. Is there any questions?
So a couple of things that you had stated in your site plan review, which is also the special use permit. The site plan goes hand in hand with the special use permit. So you're gonna have, your hours of operation are gonna be eight to five, Monday through Friday, and then eight to 12 on Saturdays.
Correct.
Couple of employees. I actually went up to the site today to take a few pictures, and Rich was there, so he showed me around.
Yeah, if you want an employee in the office, scheduling one employee in the shop, doing the shop work.
One of the things that we were talking about while we were on the site, and one of the things that we'll have to look at as a planning board, is the recycling and waste plan and storage. On page 62 in our zoning law, we talk about dumpster screening. It is a repair shop, so I think the planning board's gonna have to decide how exactly we want to see that. Currently, the dumpster got dropped off. I'm not good with luck to write, but right behind this car.
Yup. Yup.
Is where it got, it's a, it's a small roll-off from Casella.
Yup. I think it's a four yard, is what they consider.
Yeah, yup, it's like the one up at Sage, I don't know if you know. It currently is not screened.
Now, what does screen mean? If you could tell me on that.
Screening means that when, either fencing, or there's some different types of screening. You can screen with greenery, trees and whatnot. You can screen with a fence.
So what would you do?
Where it is now, you'd have to screen with some type of fencing.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Unless-
Castigate it?
Yes, so that you don't see the dumpster. Or that it's more appealing to the eye. I know that they have screen theirs up at Sea Store Dunkin' Donuts. They have some type of fencing around it.
Right, hide it.
Yes, yes, to make it not look like a dumpster. Make it look like a fence with a dumpster behind it. So that, that's something as a board, I think we need to discuss. Some of the other things too are, let me just get my notes here. I really was digging into a lot of this different stuff today. In the commercial district, so Rich is in the general commercial district. There's only three pieces of property in the general commercial district. With that comes some things like signs can be internally illuminated, which will be great for his shop. That was revision to the sign law. So we'll get to the sign permit in a minute, but vehicle sales, service and repair are part of our additional district and use regulations. On page 20, Section 521, there are some special things that need to be dealt with when it comes to vehicle repair. Did I say page 20? It's page 40. I apologize. Page 20 is not that. Page 40. A curbed landscape area shall be maintained at least three feet in depth along all street frontage space not used as driveway. Recurred landscaping and screening treatments of such areas shall be determined through site plan review, which is what we're doing. I think that, I went up there, I didn't realize there were kind of curb cuts, sort of there.
Two or more, right?
Yeah, so there's like two entrances on one side and two entrances on the other side. So that is nice, that it's not completely chaotic and crazy.
Yup.
I think that you had originally talked to me about maybe thinking about doing an entrance and exit?
Yes. We could probably do that on both sides, I think.
I think so too, wife drag was up there.
Yeah.
I think so too. The other thing is no automobile parts or dismantled vehicles will be stored with, like, outside. It has to be stored within the building. No repair work or automobile maintenance performed outside the building. Obviously, there will be times where you're gonna have to have the vehicle outside, but the majority of the work would be done inside. So I think the board is gonna have to figure out what type of landscaping, if any. We're gonna ask from Rich?
There's a grassy area.
In the front, correct. The, I found, I found something today that I thought might be okay. And it's just a matter of if I can find it amongst all my pictures here. It was a low landscaping. Here it is. Minus the tree, because you're talking about you're at a major intersection.
Yup.
But a little bit of low landscaping in that little area. Might be, might be nice. I don't know that we can, I mean, that's really the only area.
Yeah, even three feet tall is when they turn into-
Exactly, exactly.
Right, especially just the way it's shaped.
Yeah. That would soften it up there though.
Just some flowers, basically.
It's basically, it's basically like some small shrubs in the-
Right.
Yeah, like-
Right.
Gary.
Using up accidents at that intersection, now we don't want to create anymore.
Great. It would give it a little curb appeal.
I think the color choices that you've chosen for your building, you're gonna definitely add some curb appeal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Appreciate that.
I agree. We thought, we really liked the retro vibe that you're going for. It kind of is cool with like the block windows on the side.
Yup.
We have to have a question. What are these little windows at the top? Are those windows?
I think it's just brick, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's, I wanna say it was some type of vent at one point or another, because it looks like there was some, some type of ventilation maybe in front of it, but I really didn't get a good eyeball on it.
We thought that could look cool if it was a lighter color. It would look really retro with your whole thing.
Gotcha.
Just the little-
Just around the whole-
Just highlight that in some way.
Yeah, I just, I guess I can see it now on this picture.
Yeah.
So just that?
That's below it.
Just that or above?
Yeah, those little-
Vertical slits.
Yeah. So highlight, just the vertical slits.
Yeah. I think that would look really cool, Rich.
So like in white or something?
Or in yellow?
I see what you mean.
See how you're kinda highlighting, it makes it super retro.
Figure sheet?
Yeah, it does, it's neat. This is what it's gonna look like.
And then I don't know if you mentioned, but above that front door there, there's gonna be an awning. It's kind of like a picture to go with it. So that's gonna kind of freshen up a little bit. You're not gonna see an air conditioner hanging out of the top there.
Right, it's really gonna be below the strip, right?
The awning.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right below it.
Right.
Yup. We like your vision.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it will. So, part of what the village has been working towards with our new zoning law and also with the Main Street Grant, is trying to make it really appealing coming into the village. We actually rezoned some properties up near the craft shop that people could actually, if they purchased it, could have a neighborhood commercial business, so that that entry is very appealing into the village. So you're like the entry into the village.
Yeah.
So we're really-
Same here, too.
Yeah, we're really excited that someone's gonna take that property and take care of it and make it look great, because it's basically saying welcome to Virgin. And we really like the racetrack, the stripe, the whole thing. It's such a retro-ish building. We think it's really neat and it's really gonna put a nice face lift to it.
I'm glad you guys like it.
So what does the board think of any type of screening for the dumpster or the landscaping? Because I think those are kind of really the two things that need to be addressed before this goes to the county, which it has to.
Well, I think there's, there definitely needs to be some screening, some sort of screening for the dumpster.
I agree.
Now, does it have to be high up? Because I have fencing, but I mean, you'd be able to see through it.
Well, that's why I think like slap fencing.
Right, kinda like, yeah.
Like a picket fence kind of deal.
Not chain link?
Not chain link.
It's kind of, it's like chain link, but then it has like a plastic.
The spine's not through, yeah, yeah.
That's what these guys are talking about. But I do have, I have a fence that you can see through, but I guess we won't be able to-
That wouldn't really be screened.
Exactly. These are the times around the dumpster. We still see, we still see everything.
Right. The dumpster enclosure must be equal to or taller than the dumpster being screened, is what it says in the zoning law. You know, obviously, it would be great if it was something that went with your whole, I mean, to make this look so awesome and then-
Right, to have a crappy dumpster fenced.
It's right next to the building. It's just, it's, I mean, it's just night and day. It would be so great, you know?
Is there a back door to the building?
Oh, there's a side door.
Side door.
Two side doors.
Right.
Joe?
When you say fencing, does it have to go right around the whole unit? Because you have to allow for-
Well, no. I mean, it needs to be screened, but obviously-
It's gonna have to have a gate or something.
They need to be-
Do you need a gate? Okay, just put something in front of it, block it from the road.
I'm thinking maybe-
No, it needs to be, it needs to be screened. Like screened all the way around.
You need a gate, then.
It needs to be accessible, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe the fence that I have, but put like a mesh type of, like a black mesh screen on the outside of it or something, maybe?
Yeah, I think black wouldn't look bad with-
No.
With what you have going on.
Because white would just get dirty quick.
Yeah, would, yes. I mean, black, black wouldn't look bad. I mean, you've got a whole gray-black-yellow thing going.
Exactly.
And then as far as the landscaping, I mean, I think something like this would be sufficient.
You want to send me that picture?
Yeah, I'll make a copy before you leave.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, these are little, I mean, we can say no more than three feet high if you want.
I wasn't, I was thinking about them two little areas where you pull in and separate. I think we might be able to do something in there too.
Yeah, the one where the mailbox is, is pretty small.
Maybe put like a, oh yeah, you're right. I was thinking like a wooden thing or something with flowers in it, you know what I mean?
I think this would be enough just in that center part. That would just enough to-
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I mean, as long as the board's in agreement with that.
Yeah. Though if you wanted to add flowers, nobody would object.
No, 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 we do like flowers.
We'll try to splice it up as much as we can.
And so on your exterior renovation, you said you're gonna redo the parking lot at some point and strike it up?
We'd like to, yeah.
Is that like further down the road?
Yeah, because I mean, as I actually just noticed it the other day as I was pulling out, that it is kinda patchy as you pull in on that one side. So I don't think I can just get away with a seal and like a crack fill.
There's grass growing in some parts of it.
Yeah, oh, I know that. We could get rid of that and then have them fill the cracks, but down a little bit lower, it looks like there's some stones and stuff coming up and showing through, so. As far as a resurface goes,
Yeah.
I probably wouldn't go off and do that myself, but you know, I'd get ahold of the men Cusos that own the property and say, hey, look, you know, something that maybe we can, we can do as far as a resurface goes, but.
Yeah.
As far as sealing, the seal goes, I don't know if it's gonna be worth it on that one side of the lot. I mean, we're freshening the lot up, but on that one side, there's a stone coming through, so I don't know.
So if you don't do any sealing or resurfacing, will you stripe it all or no?
At that point, I don't know. I mean, I'd rather, I guess it's up in the air. If we seal it, we're definitely gonna stripe it.
Right.
I don't know if it's gonna be worth strapping it if we're not doing it fresh, you know what I mean?
I think if you don't stripe it though, you'll have to have some sort of
Yeah, some sort of like-
Plan for parking cars, so it doesn't just look like chaotic.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll figure that part out. I mean, the seal, the seal jobs obviously are taking a lot cheaper.
Oh yeah, for sure. And trust us, we understand with the economy, the way it is and, you know.
I'm trying to work out a deal with them where I do all the work on the building, because I own a construction company too, so. You know, I'm not trying to do work for free, but at the same time, I want the building to look good because it's got money on the building.
Yup.
So what you see here is basically what it's gonna look like when it's done. Right now, the building's like falling apart. So we're gonna make sure that we tidy all that up and do the best we can, but as far as the parking lot goes, I mean,
It's a big one.
When it's spraying, when it's spraying-
Yeah, it is, it's a big parking lot.
You're fucking north of $100,000 resurfaced or something like that.
Right, right.
Yup.
And what they're asking for in the building, you know?
Exactly.
Already, so it's like,
Yup.
I don't know how much money they're gonna sink into it. But I mean, it wouldn't look bad if it did have a fresh seal on it though. You know, freshen it up.
Yeah.
It'd be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fix the problems, but it looked-
Look better.
You know, make it look better.
Yup. Yup, for sure. For sure.
Just one other question. Do they have waste storage tanks up there for antifreeze and?
You said you were in the- Equipment, where is it?
Oh, recycling.
Yeah, recycling. How are you doing that?
So basically, we're gonna have bladed cans or slash drums. And then uh- Basically just put the oil from the vehicle right into them. Drain it out of the vehicle.
And those are inside?
Right from the drain pan, right into the barrel, yup. And then when the barrels get full, you know, transport them either like Advance or Autozone or somebody that does recycling and has a heater or-
Yup.
But eventually, I wouldn't mind getting a gas or a oil brand heater in that sense, so that way it's, you know, free thing.
Yes, thank you.
A lot of stuff I wanna do down the road, but only gonna have, you know, funds for just to get it up and off. You know, exactly.
And so in, in the recycling waste plan and storage, it does say too that you'll transport it and that you plan to store any new or used parts and tires in the 12 by 12 storage room off the shop.
Yes.
So tires will be inside.
Yeah, that was my question, I saw it on here.
Yeah, and then what we talked about earlier is a possible like lean to some, something going off the back of the building, maybe, you know, look like a rock area. You know what I mean? Like a lean to, like a little, I don't know, that might be a little bit more storage for something like tires or something like that off the back of the building, you know what I mean? It could be enclosed, yeah.
Yup.
Right, it's on the same side.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, right behind the building though, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'd be closed off with like metal, you know?
Yes.
You've seen that before, right?
Yeah. But that's not on this plan, right?
No.
I would put that on this plan. That you, further down the road, that's what you'd like to do. You can even put it as a phase two.
Yeah.
That way, if it's approved, that way, with special use permit.
Is that something that we'd add here or?
You can, yeah. You, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask you to add the now three things that we've talked about.
Yup.
Just in the plan, so that when I send it to the county and when we get ready for the public hearing next month, that it's all in there. So this is kind of a preliminary go-through. So I would add that to your plan and describe what it's going to be, that it's gonna be enclosed and that, so that when Gary's driving by and there's like stuff off the back and he's like, what, what's going on?
Right.
I'll come and see it. We're gonna meet anyway, so.
And the screening of the dumpster?
Yes, and the screening of the dumpster should be put into this, into the plan. And then I will give you a copy of the landscaping. I think the landscaping's the only other issue that we have as far as the special use permit and the site plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
You know what the sign, yeah, right?
No.
Glad to see a new business coming into Virgin.
Yes.
We're trying.
And fixing the building, too.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I like that most of the time.
It's such a visible property.
It really, really is. It really is. Okay, so no more questions on the special use permit and site plan. All right, do I have a motion to move this forward to the county with all of the three changes? Rich will hand me the new updated plan before I have to send it over to the county.
So who?
Yup.
Second? Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this has to go to the county. I did talk to Felipe, because it is a special use permit and it is on Route 33 and Route 19. They do have to see it. I have to get the information over to him by the 2nd of February for them to see it on the 9th. So I-
So you need the updated version by the 2nd?
Yes.
Before the 2nd.
Yeah, yeah. Probably on the 3rd, is the 30th of Monday?
Yes.
Probably by the 30th would be fantastic. And I'll move that along. So we also need to have a public hearing because it is a special use permit. So do I have a motion to hold a public hearing on February 15th at 7:15 to hear the special use permit?
Yes.
Carol? Second? Todd, all in favor? That's right. Public hearing, I'd say yes.
So that's February 15th, you said?
February 15th. So-
Is there a time for that or?
7:15.
Same place?
Yes. So that will be posted all around town. We will also send it to, how many, how many? Feet? Five, any, any business or any residential person who is 500 feet from your property will get a letter stating that there's a public hearing, because obviously they have a lot of investment in your property, because they live near there. I will also post it on the property that there's a public hearing for the special use permit for this.
Gotcha.
It will go over to the paper also.
Okay.
And so then the public will have an opportunity to come in and let us know if they have any comments about the special use permit. They will address the board and if there is any comments about it, so.
Sounds good.
All right, so that is the special use permit and the site plan that goes along with it. So now we have the sign permit. Which is different, but we can use some of the pictures. I know, I keep losing my, oh. All right, so as we discussed, the Conti's Auto will be in the general commercial area, which means they are one of three properties who has the opportunity to have an internally illuminated sign, which he is going to take advantage of. The original plan was one internally illuminated sign on the front and then two wall signs on the side. But Rich and I talked, our law only allows two wall signs on any building. So he's going to change that. Because he can't have three.
Now, did we say something about the window on that side? That we might be able to stick something on there?
Yes. So, um, let's talk about the, the big signs first. I think they're sharp. I don't know what sign you decided to put the second sign on, and that one is not lit, that's gonna just be regular, right?
Yes, I think that's gonna go on the right side based off the fact that we have the window on the lot. So if we can use 25% of that window as advertisement as well, then that's just as good as a sign for me, you know?
Yup. So then you can use the window claim, the window sign. It just has to be 25%. Can't be more than 25%. So we talked about-
So you're gonna put it on this wall?
Oh, the wall sign's gonna go on the other side, and then you see the little window right there to the left on that same-
Yeah, oh, that window, oh, okay. Now, where does the dumpster go?
It's literally right in front of it. It's literally right in front of that window, actually, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. More relatively in that area.
So it will be screened.
It might be, yeah, exactly, you might not be.
Good point, Vicki.
Well, I mean, you have a window here, right?
Yeah, we plan on putting stuff in those windows.
So, well, which, which way has more traffic, is there more traffic from that side or more traffic from nineteen and thirty feet?
I mean.
I don't know.
Cause you got people coming from the four ninety.
I would think, I would think, I would keep this one personally.
Yeah.
Cause I think there's, that's gonna be more visible from people driving.
Yep.
And they're on that side of the road.
Yeah, kinda stinks the windows off to the back behind the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I mean.
And then you're gonna have a lit one in the window here, right?
There's gonna be a couple of open signs in the window, but the only lit, the only lit sign that we're gonna have is.
The top, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, it's above the door.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so then you don't need a wall sign there.
No, that is a wall sign.
Oh, the wall sign's gonna be lit?
Yes, on the front, this one.
Just on the front.
And then this one's just gonna be a wall sign, not lit.
Right.
Is it?
So here, this is the way it is right now, is this where the dumpster's gonna be?
That's where his, yeah.
I'm gonna read one of his, that trailer, I was reading the picture.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna have a wall sign from this level?
I didn't even, yeah, so this is all gonna be in the window as well.
Right.
It's not gonna take up as much of the window, as seen in the picture.
That's probably covered by the.
No.
Yeah, like, here's, oh, there's.
So on that same aspect, we could probably do a sign in that window, coming from four ninety and then an upper wall sign on the other side. Is that what you were thinking? So use that window space in the front where it says, uh, I think it says gas and diesel there.
Yes.
Yeah.
So right below that, he's, he's saying, put the Conti's Auto sign there in that window. And then on the other side, put the flat wall sign up top.
Way up top, so it'll be above where your dumpster would be, like the screening.
So where gas diesel is would be just.
Conti's Auto.
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Basically the same sign you see there, but just in the window, twenty-five percent, taking up twenty-five percent above the window there, the top part of the window.
Yeah, as a clean sign.
You don't wanna buy a dumpster.
Huh?
No, we're gonna wanna up, up on.
So put it in the same like location basically as it is on the front.
Yeah.
On the side, if you had it up high, then it wouldn't be blocked by anything.
Correct, yes, exactly. Not a bad idea. But I mean, people coming from the four ninety and stuff, they'll be able to see it.
Yeah.
It's gonna stick out hard for sure.
Oh yeah, just the whole, people are gonna be like, that looks awesome, I know. It's a well-traveled road. Okay, so we have decided that the Conti's Auto on the front is gonna be illuminated. Then the other side, it's gonna be on the other side.
Right.
Right, can you do new drawings, is that hard, like, I don't, I don't know how hard this stuff is.
I might be able to.
You don't have to.
Okay.
We're just gonna put it in the file, so this is gonna be on the other side, the side, correct?
Yeah.
This is the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, on that side, yes, I could probably cut and paste that. And then you're gonna have a window sign here that's Conti Auto.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent.
That's what we're going with, yeah.
And then what's gonna be here?
I'm surprised.
Anything?
Uh, I guess what you see.
Has to be much smaller.
Right. Yeah, it's gonna be probably just the size of the complete and truck repair, complete auto and truck repair. That's about twenty-five percent, right?
That is even more.
It's like a thirty.
Yeah, I'm seeing, yeah, it's definitely, okay. Well, I get to just a bit, though. It'll definitely be smaller than that, for sure.
And then what about the sign on the door?
That?
Is the door glass?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, you couldn't tell, I thought it was, I thought it was black.
No, if there is a limit to the window signs.
I can't remember. I have so much paper.
I know. I had it out, let's see if I can. You have a lot of pieces of paper, Rich. I did tell Rich, Rich did a very nice job on.
It's very complete.
It is very complete.
I'm usually always missing something too.
You are not. Why can I not find that sign law? Did anybody have their sign law? Well, thank you, Gary. Thank you very much, let me just look at the windows. Okay, it does not, it does not have a limit.
A limit.
It just has to be twenty-five percent or less.
So you can put around the doors, you know?
Yeah, as long as it's less than twenty-five percent. We just don't want you, we just don't want it all filled up. So I guess I need to ask the board, do you want to approve the sign permit tonight, or do you want to wait until the special use permit public hearing?
Well, let's, let's restate what we've decided.
Okay.
And go then.
Okay, these are the changes that are gonna be made. Or not made. One, the, one internally illuminated sign is gonna be on the front above the garage. The second wall sign is going to be on the.
West.
West side?
Yeah.
See, I was, I was gonna be right, west side. Okay, so those are your two wall signs that you're allotted. All right, on the east side, there's going to be a Conti's Auto window, twenty-five percent or less. Here. Where, uh, right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no ones, and no wall sign.
And no wall sign.
Right.
Then on the door, there'll be the same window sign that you have, just it has to be twenty-five percent or less. And you're gonna have complete auto and truck repair with your phone number in the main window, twenty-five percent or less.
Can I just suggest auto and truck repair rather than the complete to get it down in size?
Right.
Right, then you could have two ones.
Yeah, that's a better idea.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
Yep, so do inspections, is there a place where you can put it on?
Yes.
Or New York State?
Right here.
Up at the top.
Those are.
These little signs, oh, oh.
Yeah, they're exempt signs, you're allowed to have whatever is necessary for your.
Well, that's.
Legally.
Will be the inspection sign, the registered sign, so.
Yes. And did, I think, yeah, I have your liability insurance.
Yeah, it's connected to the sign.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't give a copy to everybody, only me and Gary with this. All right, so it is sign permit S one dash twenty twenty-three, the sign permit for Conti Auto, for the two wall signs and the window signs, do I have a motion to approve?
So who?
Vicki, second?
I will second.
David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Rich, I'm gonna write that all up for you and send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so we'll have the public hearing next meeting, seven fifteen. Um, at that point in time, we'll see what the county says, we'll have their referral back, Rich, so we will know what the county says. And um, if the planning board is so moved, we can make um, final determination at that meeting.
On the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the next time I'm gonna see you guys on, on the fifteenth?
Yes, yes.
Except for when you bring in.
Except for when you.
By the thirtieth.
By the thirtieth.
Gotcha.
By the thirtieth, and I'm gonna give you some, we have to fill out a secret form, but we can do that at the next meeting. Um, it's just a environmental impact thing that we have to do for anything, it's very simple, and I can work with you to do it. I can help you do your part even, work with you. I'm not gonna be here on the thirtieth, Rich. Um, uh, if you're, if you're gonna be at the thirtieth, come in on the first. Cause I'll need to make sure I have everything. Thank you, Barb, I totally forgot.
I just happened to write that down.
Wait.
There's a little post-it note on my desk.
I can bring it sooner than the thirtieth.
Perfect, that would be perfect, yep, I can get it over there anytime, I can get you on the docket. So, okay, so I think that's it for Rich, Rich, do you have any questions?
I think we covered everything.
Yeah, good meeting.
Yeah.
Good meeting, so we are all set with you, we have a little more business, which you do not need to stay for unless you really want to.
I'm gonna sit on the couch.
All right.
I appreciate you all positivity, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
See you guys next time.
All right, so, great. So anyways, let's get to that, I probably lost that, I'm washing that out. Okay, so, you know, just some light reading on the NICOM, NICOM sent this out today on the New York housing that's going on the state budget. Um, read through it, I read through it today, here's what I. Here's my takeaway from it. Here's my takeaway from it, um, they're gonna be targeting on a three-year cycle municipalities to add additional housing. And they, basically without saying as much, they want it to be very creative. Okay, they're talking about different ways to do this, including taking underutilized office parks and strip malls and making them housing, et cetera, et cetera. Because obviously, like, for a village like Virgin, we don't have, unless we have a whole housing development come in, there's very few opportunities for additional housing. Um, I believe that this has been coming down the pipe for a while and the accessory dwelling units, which have been a hot topic everywhere in the state. For the governor, uh, we were very smart to put them in the zoning law, because for us, that's gonna cover any, that's how we could get additional housing.
Right.
Accessory dwelling units. Um, one of the things I don't think anybody wants to see is the governor or folks pushing into trying to get housing into storefronts in our vacant. So, we do not, we, we have that now, but that doesn't mean that that wanna get pushed down in some manner, so. Um, I feel like for the village of Virgin, our accessory dwelling unit is what we can hang our hat on, it, that does come down all the way to us. Do I think that this part of the state is something she's gonna focus on, no, it's gonna be downstate, it's gonna be upstate. Um, it says it right in here, I mean, I think New York only, New York City has, uh, new homes will be targeted by one percent over three years. Three percent of new homes for everybody else. Um, they're talking about metropolitan transit authority, obviously they want stuff on the rails, they want stuff near the transit. But do I think it could affect us down the road, it could. Um, I think that having the accessory dwelling unit in the zoning law is going to be very good for us.
Yeah, sounds like you could talk us about it right in here.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something that I really, B and L did a nice job protecting us in that regard, I think. I mean, I think it's, I think it's right for municipality, because there are so many big barns and old garages and whatnot, I mean.
Big houses.
Yeah, big houses, so. So anyways, that's the long and the short of this. As I get more information, as we get information, we'll pass it along. So. All right, does anybody have any questions? Anybody willing?
What's this?
Oh, that was just the parts of the zoning law that we were talking about.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I couldn't find a copy of the sign law.
Oh, okay, I'll, we'll give you one on the way out.
Yeah, sorry. I couldn't find it.
Okay. Anybody else, Lily, any questions? No, you guys good?
Yeah, I was just looking through the packet.
All righty. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
David! Second?
Sure.
Okay, Carol, all in favor? All right, see ya, it's seven o'clock, uh, February fifteenth, we'll start the.